Let it go.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you all for coming. I would like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Wednesday, September 3rd, 2025 to order. The city encourages you to review tonight's agenda carefully. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. While the Milton Rules allow speaker to turn in their comment card up until the clerk calls the agenda item, once the agenda item is called, no more comment cards can be accepted. Will city clerk please call the roll and make general announcements?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Be happy to call roll for the Wednesday, September 3rd, 2025 regular meeting. I would like to remind all people in attendance, please silence on cell phones at this time. As the mayor mentioned, if you would like to make a public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to that agenda item being called. If you are representing an organization, a notarized affidavit is required stating you have the authority to speak on behalf of that organization. If you've not brought, if you've not submitted your public comment cards, please do so now. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited. Please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, or outbursts with any person speaking. Anyone in violation may be asked to leave. Mayor and council, as I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Peyton Jameson?
Here.
Councilmember Andrea Vierhoff?
Here.
Councilmember Juliette Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Jan Jacobus?
Present.
Councilmember Phil Kramer?
Here.
For the record, Councilmember Doug Haney and Councilmember Carol Kirkley are absent. Mayor, you do have a quorum. Would everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next is approval of the meeting agenda. No executive session, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I would like to open it for a motion to approve the meeting agenda. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting agenda as proposed?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilwoman Cranmer and a second from Councilwoman Jacobus to approve the meeting agenda as proposed. Please place your votes. Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Hey, next is general public comment. Do we have any general public comment?
Mayor, I do not have any general public comment for tonight.
Okay, so I'll waive the comment rolls and I'll ask you to call the next item, please.
Thank you, Mayor. And Mayor, that's going to be right into consent. Our first item is going to be approval of the August 18th, 2025 regular city council meeting minutes. It's agenda item number 25229. Our next item is approval of the financial statements and investment report for the period ending July 31st, 2025. Agenda item number 25230. Next is approval of a project framework agreement by and between Georgia Department of Transportation and City of Milton for transportation facility improvements. It's PI number 0021207. State Route 372, Birmingham Highway at Batesville Road. It's agenda item number 25231. Our next item, approval of a project framework agreement by and between the Georgia Department of Transportation and the City of Milton for transportation facility improvements. PI 0021208, State Route 372, Birmingham Highway at New Bullpen Road. Agenda item number 25232. Next is approval of a construction services agreement with Bridgeport Carpet Inks to renovate the bathrooms at Legacy Park. Agenda item number 25233. Our next item is approval of a memorandum of understanding between the City of Milton and Music Milton, Inc. for use of council chambers for gala. Agenda item number 25234. Our next item is approval of professional services agreement with MXI Environmental Services LLC for household hazardous waste collection events. Agenda item number 25235. Our next item is approval of a construction services agreement between the City of Milton and Buckeye Land Management, Inc. for the fiscal year 25 stormwater projects at various locations. Agenda item number 25236. Next is an approval of a change order number one to the professional services agreement between the City of Milton and International Cybernetics Company, LLC, formerly known as IMS Infrastructure Management Services, LLC for the final citywide pavement condition survey. It's agenda item number 25237. Our final consent agenda is approval of a professional services agreement with Kekinwood, Inc. for traffic signal plans for the State Route 140, Arnold Mill Road at Green Road intersection project. Agenda item number 25238. Mayor Jameson?
Thank you. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilwoman Jacobus and a second from Councilwoman Johnson to approve the consent agenda as read. Please place your votes. Councilmember Varral?
Oh, I thought that went through. Sorry.
You're good. There we go. That motion passes unanimously. Okay, we'll now move on to reports and presentation. Will city clerk please say on the first item?
Thank you, Mayor. That first item is going to be a proclamation recognizing the Cambridge Route Youth Track Team. Mayor Jameson?
Thank you. It is my honor to recognize an organization that's making a real difference in the lives of our young people. Cambridge Youth Track isn't just about competing, it's about building confidence, character, and community. What started with just a few passionate families has grown into something truly special, and today, we celebrate the athletes, coaches, and families who make it all possible. I was talking to some of the young track stars in the crowd, and they're telling me their mile times, and it kind of got me a little depressed, but um, y'all are doing such an outstanding, standing job, and I tell you what, I think y'all are gonna be very successful in the future. So it is my honor to read this proclamation recognizing the Cambridge Youth Track Team as a positive, productive, successful program for youth athletes. Whereas Cambridge Youth Track is an outstanding Milton-based nonprofit dedicated to encouraging, mentoring, and exposing young athletes to the many elements and benefits of track and field. And whereas it had started four years ago when three families spearheaded an initiative to bring top-quality track and field team in the North Fulton area. And whereas participants range in age from six to 18 years old and represent all competitive levels, from beginners to nationally accomplished athletes in sprints, hurdles, mid-distance runs, as well as various throwing and jumping disciplines. And whereas they practice out of Cambridge High's track complex in coordination with a school and participate at meets regionally and across the country, including over the recently completed summer season with 16 athletes competing in Junior Olympics hosted in Savannah, Georgia, with one All-American athlete in high child. And whereas, the participants develop and excel with support from an exemplary, well-rounded staff that includes professional athletes, former national champions, college coaches, Team USA World Champion Will Williams, and gold medalist Dwight Phillips. And whereas, thanks to them, Cambridge Youth Track fosters a positive, productive environment in which children can thrive as athletes and as people. Now therefore, we, the mayor and the city council of City Milton, celebrate the accomplishments and character of the Cambridge Youth Track Team, and we proudly wish its athletes continued success on and off the track. This is given under my hand and seal of the City of Milton, Georgia on this third day of September of 2025. Congratulations. If all the track team will come up and we'll give you a proclamation, we'll do a group picture.
Oh, yes. All right, don't move until everybody's done.
Greg, do you have yours?
I have one.
Kids are so cute.
Okay, if you'll please call the next item, please.
Mayor, that next item is a proclamation recognizing September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Mayor Jameson?
Thank you. It is my honor to recognize an organization that's making a real difference in the lives of our young people. Sorry, that was last proclamation, but this organization is also. This is an organization that I've just seen how strong and compassionate our community can be, especially when it comes to supporting our children. Childhood Cancer Awareness Month is a time to come together, shine a light on the realities too many families face, and honor the courage of kids fighting battles no child should have to face. And it's true, it's unfortunate, I think a lot of people in this community have faced childhood cancer, and we probably all know someone that has done that, or has gone through that. And as, with that, I will now read this proclamation recognizing September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas, about 1 in 285 children in the United States will be diagnosed with cancer before they turn 20, making it the leading cause of death by disease nationally for this age group. And whereas, leukemia, brain tumors, lymphoma, melanoma, soft tissue, and bone tumors are the most common youth cancer types. And whereas, Childhood Cancer Awareness Month is an opportunity every September to share details on this reality, promote related funding and research, and help families in need. And whereas, young people with cancer have every aspect of their lives turned upside down while, too often, while undergoing extensive, expensive treatments. And whereas, they and their families can benefit greatly from financial, psychological, physical, and logistical support. And whereas, this can come in many forms, such as through groups like the Mighty Millie Foundation, which honors Millie Merchek by funding research, raising awareness, and providing assistance to other families now going through similar battles. And whereas, Milton stands shoulder to shoulder with every child and their loved ones bravely struggling with cancer, encouraging our big-hearted community to join us in offering love and support. Now therefore, we, the mayor and the city council of Milton proclaim September as Childhood Cancer Awareness in Milton, and this is given under my hand and seal of the City of Milton, Georgia on this third day of September of 2025. I think we have the Mighty Millie Foundation is here, and they'll come up and get the proclamation, and we'll take a group picture. I'll probably have all of council come down, if that works.
How are y'all? It's good to see you.
Good seeing you again.
Oh, my goodness.
Can we please say on the next item?
Mayor, that final reports and proclamation, presentation item is a proclamation recognizing Milton Mental Wellness Month and raising awareness to help prevent suicide. Mayor Jameson?
Thank you. Last, but not least, I know how important it is to talk openly and honestly about mental health. Every one of us faces struggles, some seen, many unseen, and too often, people suffer in silence. That's why we're committed to building a community where no one feels alone, and where seeking help is seen as a sign of strength, not weakness. Together, we can break the stigma and lift one another up. And I will read this proclamation promoting awareness, understanding, and support for mental wellness while recognizing Suicide Prevention Week. Whereas, every human faces issues, big and small, that impact their mental health, though not all are comfortable, equipped, or supported to healthy and productively address them. And whereas, conditions such as depression, anxiety, PTSD, and other disorders affect people of all ages, of all types, and from all places, including right here in Milton. And whereas, the city understands the reality, complexity, and severity of many people's challenges along these lines, which drives its dedicated effort to promote mental wellness. And whereas, this includes a vital partnership with the LRJ Foundation, as evidenced by our annual webinar with this year's edition on September 16th focused on coping with trauma and grief. And whereas, the city also will team with JCAC Counseling for an interactive workshop on October 25th at Milton City Park and Preserve centered around detecting warning signs, reducing stigmas, and providing support to help prevent suicide. And whereas, Milton will join millions worldwide in marking September 10th as World Suicide Prevention Day and September 7th through the 13th as National Suicide Prevention Week. And whereas, our community is stronger, healthier, and happier when there is a culture of honesty, awareness, acceptance, and support related to mental health. Now therefore, we, the mayor and the city council of the City of Milton proclaim September 7th through the 13th as Suicide Prevention Week and encourage people to take advantage of mental health programs, resources, and info as seen online at MiltonGA.gov/mentalwellness. And this is given under my hand and seal of the City of Milton, Georgia on this third day of September of 2025. Everybody will come up. I think we have the LRJ Foundation and Counseling. Everybody come up?
If I can just have y'all shift just a little bit this way for the picture. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Greg?
Yep.
Can you do one more picture, too?
Sure. Thank you.
You know what, I don't, what's your, what's your number? Here. I'll email you right away, right now, so. Thank you.
All right, there are no first presentation, public hearings, zoning agenda, or unfinished business items. We'll now move on to new business. Will city clerk please say on the item?
Mayor, that new business item is consideration of a resolution approving a list of roads for submission to the Georgia Department of Transportation and Georgia Department of Public Safety for updates to the speed detection device permit. It's agenda item number 25239. Our Public Works Director, Sarah Leaders.
Hopefully the slides are gonna pull up here in a minute.
It will. In just a few minutes, there they come.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. This item is approving a list of roads. So we have a list that includes the limits of different roadway segments throughout the city, as well as the speed limits that are associated with those roads. And we do have to submit those to the Georgia Department of Transportation, and also the Georgia Department of Public Safety conducts a review of those list of roads and approves updates to the radar permit that allows enforcement of those speed limits. So tonight, this item is again looking at that, an update to that list of roads. So just to give a little background on this process is, it really came out of the strategic plan goal that talked about having our transportation infrastructure allow for calm, safe, and efficient movement of people throughout the city. Out of that, we, we moved forward with an initiative to create a local road safety plan in 2022, I believe is when that was adopted. And in that plan, we had some different components. First were the major emphasis areas with vehicle speeds being one of the, the top-rated emphasis areas to focus on. And then we had what we call engineering countermeasures. Those are things you could do to make improvements within that specific emphasis area. And one of those was speed limit reviews. And then we have an action plan out of that planning document as well, which was to study and review possible changes to posted speed limits. And this is the third time that we have gone through this process. We try to do it every six to 12 months to take a look at some different roadways and review, review the speed limits. Guess before I jump into that, too, the, the things that go into these engineering studies is we collect speed data, we look at the number of driveways. There's a lot of components that go into creating this report that then provides a recommended speed limit. So the areas we studied in this round that we're proposing for review of the speed limit are New Providence Road, the entire limits of that from State Route 140 to the roundabout at Birmingham Highway 372. It's currently posted at 45. Then, next is Thompson Road, so the segment from Red Road up to Hopewell Road. And last, Bethany Bend from Hopewell Road to State Route 9. Said these are existing 45 mile an hour roads and the proposed speed limit that we're these are existing 45 mile an hour roads, and the proposed speed limit that we're recommending is 40 miles an hour. Did want to go back to our overall map here and talk a little bit about our strategy for what roads we look at. And our process has been to look at both an expanding method as well as an incremental. So we're looking at where we can do some five mile an hour adjustments, primarily looking at our 45 mile an hour roads, which are the black lines shown on this map. So that's been our focus so far. We have had one speed limit lowered from 40 to 35, but a big goal of this is looking at our 45 mile an hour roads and seeing if it makes sense with, given the conditions, to look at lowering those. The other component of this update is the school zone. There's an existing school zone shown in orange. This is the Cambridge High School school zone, and it extends a little to the north on Cogburn, and then it ends about at the school property line on Cogburn and then Bethany Bend. It's just west of Cogburn and extends to the school property line on the east side. So we were approached a couple years ago from, I guess it was about a year and a half ago, from Kings Ridge to look at including their school within the school zone. We already have a, it's not a flashing sign, but it's just a warning sign that there is school traffic associated with Kings Ridge as well. So we did some studies, collected traffic counts, and are going to submit to expand the school zone on Bethany Bend. So the school zone's gonna overlap. So we're looking to expand it to the west to be able to include Kings Ridge in the same area. And as part of that, because we have proposed Bethany Bend to lower from 45 to 40, we'd be looking to lower that school zone from 35 to 30 on all approaches. Our next steps is to, if this list of roads is approved tonight, to submit those studies and request to Georgia Department of Transportation. At that point, it goes through their review process, which also includes the Department of Public Safety reviewing. And then, once we get that final approval, we believe we have good supporting documents for all of these, but it's up to them to ultimately, to those two agencies to review and approve. So once we get that final list, we would come back for you with a resolution, just documenting that these were the final changes on our list of roads, and then we post the new speed limits. Be happy to answer any questions.
Sarah, the school zone, I totally get that. That makes total sense. The reduction in the speed limit, the data behind it to support the recommendation for those three roads, what is the driving factor there? In other words, what problem are we solving? Or what problem did you guys identify that would suggest be the citizens, travelers would benefit with a five mile per hour reduction?
So the main thing we collect, and what used to be the only basis of reviewing these, is what speeds people are traveling. The other factors we look at that, in these cases, have shown that they do warrant a lower speed limit is the presence of cyclists. That's a big factor. Are there other, are there people walking alongside the road? Are there cyclists using the road as well, you know, in the travel lanes? That's a big factor. Limited sight distance, the number of driveways. Let's see, what else? Any curves that are, have curb warning signs that may not be designed to the speed limit that is posted, so they need a lower advisory speed? The presence of different uses along the roadway. So there's a whole list of things that we do look at. But I guess probably the biggest drivers are the actual speed that people are traveling, the horizontal curvature, and then the presence of cyclist.
Do we really think lowering the speed limit will, I guess, drive the behavior we're intending? Or at the end of the day, does that really require different measures? I'm just trying to figure out, are we solving for a problem that may not exist? That's why I'm asking about the data. I get what you're saying, the high speed, but I don't know if reducing speed limits would drive that behavior. I don't know.
We do have, like, the local road safety plan, that's what I started with showing, was that it was, this was just one of the countermeasures. There are various other things that we look at, from striping and signage and reflectors on the roadways. What are some of the other things? We have a large toolkit of other measures in addition to this one. This just happens to be the one that, that, I mean, during the local road safety plan, it was likely the most popular, was to let's review the speed limits and see if there's opportunities for reduced speeds on certain roadways.
And Sarah, I know there's probably a little bit of history behind this, because we started this in 2018 or 2019. It took some time to kind of get used to it, but I think a lot of it came where these were all rural roads, and our population was just a few thousand or 10,000, and now we have a lot more traffic on the road. And like, for example, like the Bethany Bend at 45 miles an hour, I don't see how Bethany Bend should be 45 and Birmingham Highway should be, you know, the same speed. So, I mean, I think being proactive about it and being like data-driven, I think is important, for sure. I mean, my kind of question was, how long is it gonna take before, I know we're getting a little faster at it, but how long before the new signs come up and we communicate to the residents and stuff? How long does that take?
So we're anticipating a month or two of review through the two agencies that are part of that review process. The last time, it was a little over a month. And then we're will bring the resolution before you, because that's how we establish the list of enforceable speeds. And then, I mean, I would say within the next three months.
Because this is the first time we've done, I mean, we did, when we did the, reduced it the first time in 2020 or whatever. That was the first time we've ever done anything.
It had been a long time before that.
It was. Okay. I was just curious. Okay.
Do we look at traffic accidents and speeding on those streets? Do we have?
Yes, that was, that was part of the local road safety plan, too, was looking at the corridors where there were, where there were accidents, either at certain intersections or certain stretches of roadway. So that helped us to kind of identify what sort of measures we'd want to look for to make improvements on those roads. Your other question was speeding data?
Yeah, I mean, are we seeing a lot of speeding on these roads now at the speed limit or accidents occurring?
So I know on one of them, the Thompson segment, we have one of the radar signs that is collecting data. And then, as part of the study, we had to collect traffic and speed data. So we do have the speed and volumes that were associated with the studies, but as we kind of identified which roads we're gonna look at, looked back to the local road safety plan for that as well.
I think if I could just maybe piggyback onto that, these are, so these are open roads where the speed limits are 40 and 45 miles an hour. Georgia state law only allows us to use our radar to be able to enforce speed 10 miles an hour over that speed limit. So add 10 miles an hour to each of those speeds. And curb cuts is what is something that Sarah and her team have been able to introduce to be able to get these speed limits lowered to the point where people feel safe actually exiting their driveways. And that was some of the biggest challenges we saw when we went into this local road safety plan. People were fearful of coming in and out of their driveways, horse trailers, things along those lines, having a difficult time navigating in and out. And by using the curb cut method and not just the, what is it, 70th percentile?
Eighty-fifth.
Eighty, eighty-fifth percent. I wish it was the seventieth. The eighty-fifth percentile, which is what G-Dot used to use solely. We've been able to effectively reduce speeds and hopefully reduce fear of driving on our roads. That's a big part of it.
Sarah, can you pull up the map that showed the different speeds that? You know, one of the things that concerns me sometimes is you're on one road and you check the speed and you're going 45, and all of a sudden, you switch streets and you're not thinking about it, and all of a sudden, now you're on a 40 or a 35. Are we getting in a lot of these roads to 40? Is that what our objective is? So that you're?
Right, like, look at Bethany, Bethany Road, Bethany Way, Bethany Bend. So you have the segment at the Morris End to 9 that's 40. And then we have the segment between 9 and Hopewell that's 45, and then it jumps to 40, and then 40. So you kind of see the speed limits also as you move further, further south. Sometimes, like, where there's more, more subdivisions, more curb cuts, you will tend to see, it's a different, different feel on the roadways as well.
Sarah, is there a plan beyond the ones highlighted in yellow that you're proposing that you see in a future state will also go to 40?
So right now, with our Safe Streets for All grant, we are looking at particularly the Hopewell Corridor and the Freemanville Corridor as our two major north-souls. We have not, other than southern Freemanville, we haven't, we haven't looked at those in much detail because we know the, there are challenges with those. So we want to look at some other countermeasures on those two before we really dive into studying those in detail. Maybe, let's see where another one might be.
About Red?
Red Road, the other end of Thompson, could be in that next, that next round that we look at.
I think to Councilmember Jacobus's point, the more consistent we can be as you're traveling along a corridor, the better. So that does seem to be consistent, where we are gonna be at least migrating to 40 along some of these major corridors if approved.
The other thing, we do look across the city limit lines. So I have shown, like, Hickory Flat or Lower Birmingham on the very north end is 35 in Cherokee. And ours used to be 45. That was in round two, that we lowered that from 45 to 40. So you're going from 35 in Cherokee to now 40 in Milton. Same with Batesville and Hamby. And Francis has been 40, but Hamby was one of the ones we lowered in round two also, in Batesville.
I think it makes good sense.
Yeah. Any other questions from council? Any public comments?
We do not have any, sir.
Okay. With that, I'll open it for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 25-239.
Second?
Okay, I have a motion from Councilwoman Jacobus and a second from Councilwoman Verhof to approve Agenda Item Number 25-239. Voting's open. Please place your votes. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Well, City Clerk, please sound the next item.
Mayor, that next item is a consideration of a resolution of the city of Milton, Georgia to set municipal precincts and municipal polling places, locations for the 2025 municipal elections. It's Agenda Item Number 25-240. It's our Deputy City Manager, Stacy Englis.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening, I'm presenting a resolution to formally establish the Milton's Municipal Precincts and Polling Places for November 4th, 2025 election, this upcoming election. In 2023, if you remember, when we conducted our own election, we consolidated Fulton County's precincts into three municipal precincts in Milton. And so since Fulton County will be conducting our own, our election this year, because there's a special election, we will revert those precincts back to Fulton County precincts to mirror what they have for the special election. So this resolution resets that election structure back to 13 precincts with six polling places. That matches Fulton County. All the public notices have been properly published, and staff will complete the remaining notifications that are required, which will be posting on the sites of the previous polling places. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Stacy? Early voting Milton Library? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Okay. Any public comment?
We do not have any, sir.
Okay. I'll open it for a motion.
I can motion to approve Agenda Item Number 25-240.
Second?
Okay, I have a motion from Councilwoman Kramer and a second from Councilwoman Jacobus to approve Agenda Item Number 25-240. Please place your votes.
Come on, you booger.
There we go.
Easy. There we go.
All right. That motion passes unanimously. Okay. Any council reports to report on?
Mayor, I do have something.
Let's do it. What we got?
I'd like to officially welcome a new member to council, our new podium. It's
I was like, Sarah looked really tall.
And frankly, it's probably the most dynamic speaker in the room.
I like it.
We now are going to be able, I wanted everybody here to know just how much hard we've worked on this new podium. And look, it just fits in seamlessly. But boy, is it efficient.
Good stuff.
That's all I have, sir.
I don't like the color of that. Can we change that?
You know what? Beggars can't be choosers, okay? You get what you get. You don't fit your fit.
I'm gonna look so tall on Monday. That's all. I'm excited.
Listen, it's got wheels on it that lock. We can roll this baby out of here.
That is good.
Great. Thank you, Mayor.
Anything else, Madam?
I believe that's all I have for tonight.
All right. With that, I will open it for motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Can I get that officially on your electronic voting?
Yeah, a second.
Second?
Johnson's second, and Jacobus made the motion.
All right.